Cal, I'm gonna throw up the agenda.
Okay, no problem. We only have Mark on. We still need one more commissioner, right?
Yeah.
Hey, in the case we don't have enough commissioners, who else can take their place? Because I remember one time, the mayor had to take the place of commissioner just to keep it going.
Um, oh, I think we need at least three for a quorum.
No, but if you don't make a quorum, for example, say you only have two people, the third one, is anybody designated to take over temporarily or no?
Um, I would have to review the rules on that. I'm sorry. Heather might know that on the top, but I don't.
No, just, just, just in case, you know?
Sure. I'll take a look.
I can make your deputy today, you know, I can show you, right?
Let me, uh, shoot our email real quick.
Somebody is starting to say something, but I don't think it's clear.
Um, I think the only person that muted right now is, uh, is Mark, so I think that's just an extra one.
Can you not hear me, Zach?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still waiting on one more here.
Hey, thanks for letting me back in, Zach.
I'm bouncing and dealing with a bunch of stuff right now. Um, I just sent our email.
Computer connection problem.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything from Sean.
Okay, um, I just bounced out to, um, a couple of Facebook forums to repost the Zoom instructions separately because the link wasn't working on, um, the post that was sent out, so hopefully that will, um, help people who are trying to connect.
There's Sean. So we got, you got a quorum now, once it gets in here.
I'm gonna start because Mark's on the phone and, uh, his connection's gonna be like, I don't know, on and off. So I'd like to start the meeting while I, I got him online. And Sean's there too?
Yeah, you got Sean. So you got Sean, Mark and yourself.
Okay, um, I would like to call to order the, uh, Area Heights Planning Commissioners Meeting, February 10, 2021, at 6:05 PM. Roll call, Cal Patel present, Commissioner Shane Fell.
Present.
Uh, Commissioner Art, Commissioner Mark Collins.
Present.
We have three commissioners present. Art will just wait for him, maybe connect later.
Yeah, I, I sent an email out, so hopefully he'll be here soon.
Let's do the pleasure of the land. Aye. Thank you. Uh, Art, you wanna do a motion to approve the agenda for last meeting?
I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the agenda from last meeting, or the minutes from last meeting.
Uh, Shane, you on a second?
One second.
Uh, you any discussion on it?
No.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, let's do an approval for the minutes, tonight's minutes.
I'll make a mo- motion to pass tonight's minutes, our agenda.
One second.
Any discussion, any changes we need to make? If nothing, all in favor? Aye.
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 Uh, we have anybody for public comments?
We do have a, a collection of people from the public in the meeting now, so if anyone has a public comment, please just, uh, type in the chat and I will.
So just as a clarity, um, this public comment period is for anything that is not later on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to bring, um, concerns or issues or matters before the Plan Commission, uh, that they'd like to, uh, speak to the Plan Commission directly about, but it is not for, um, the items that are later on in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. You wanna wait, uh, thirty seconds?
I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, there's, uh, we're gonna move on to the next item since there's nobody there. Uh, we don't have any presentation tonight, uh, we don't have any public hearings. Uh, we don't have any action items, so we'll go straight into the workshop. And I guess, uh, Heather's got the workshop tonight.
Yes, I do, thank you. Uh, so as the Plan Commission may be aware, uh, one of the goals of the City Council for 2021 was to update our comprehensive plan. So going back several years to 2018, uh, the city of Airway Heights was required to do a, uh, periodic update to our comprehensive plan under the Growth Management Act, which is a state law, uh, under the RISE Code of Washington, 3670A. And at that time, the Plan Commission discussed, uh, with the consultant, CJ Alliance, what would be needed to do that periodic update and the timing necessary, and the council opted to do a two-part process. One was to initiate the necessary update to ensure compliance with other state laws and update our population projections and housing projections and our transportation chapter and capital facilities planning. But the goal was to potentially do a new visioning for a comprehensive plan as a second later effort. So I'm happy to say that last year with the Plan Commission's assistance and the City Council, we did adopt the periodic update in June of last year. And the City Council would like for us to initiate the new visioning process for a comprehensive plan. Uh, so for those that are listening for the first time, a comprehensive plan is a guiding policy document that identifies a long-term vision and the strategies that the city will work toward in order to, uh, address our community, and that includes all realms from land use like commercial, residential, industrial, to transportation, which includes walking, biking, um, vehicles, pedestrian access, and how we're going to be smart about fiscal planning in the future and how we're gonna be able to afford to provide infrastructure like water and sewer and roads to our community. So, uh, this goal is to go through a new visioning ex- exercise with our community. Uh, one of the major reasons is that, um, given the growth that Airway Heights has experienced in the last ten years, and in particular the last three, uh, where the city has grown by nearly thirty percent of our total population, um, anticipated in just three years, that there's a real opportunity to look at how our community is gonna grow in the future. So, um, what I'm gonna show you real quick is a draft scope that we're gonna be using to look at the planning effort, uh, topics that we'll be looking at specifically over the next year. And we're looking to hire a consultant to assist with that process because there's some technical work that would be needed, uh, particularly around the transportation and capital facility planning, looking, um, per our recent joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting, talking about the impacts of growth on our public safety services. So please, fire and courts, um, what are we gonna do in the future, uh, for those? Will we have to build a new facility? Will we have to invest in new fleet? Uh, and, you know, how the community wants to see growth occur? So I'm just gonna pop up a draft document real quick to show you, uh, what we're potentially looking at. Any questions from the Commission thus far with regards to, uh, why we're doing a comprehensive plan on the heels of adopting an updated? Okay, so, um, I'll try to be very quick about this because we've got a lot of items on the agenda. This is just to bring your attention to this, we're gonna go into more detail. Um, as we, uh, look at potential consultants, um, they're gonna be providing some responses to us of how to achieve these goals in a proposal, uh, as well as some timelines that they're gonna propose and some costs. But, um, namely around the land use element, we're looking at integrating the downtown plan, which we're working on presently, and we're gonna have a, a workshop on that later on today. Um, one of the areas that's kind of bubbled up in conversation is studying neighborhood retail within walking distance of our residential. We clearly have a very linear commercial area in our city along US2. This is to look at the possibility of, should we have commercial a bit closer to our residential areas to the north? Uh, we wanna look at our north side industrial area, um, from the Department of Corrections area north to the city limit. So we have, uh, done and adopted an industrial land use plan south of US2. We do have industrial land, uh, to the north. We also wanna do a closer review of potential development along that 6th, 10th, 12th Avenue corridor that would reach from the city of Spokane on our east side all the way to the Spokane Tribal Facility on the west side. Um, there was a tra- uh, market study done, talked about potential for development along that area and, and look at what, what happened as, um, potential new housing or commercial activities were to curl in that corridor. And then look at a mix of residential uses, I, and you'll find a little bit more in our downtown plan, but it's no mystery that we are very limited on the type of residential uses that are currently allowed in Airway Heights. So this will look at things like townhomes and duplexes and triplexes and other types of, of housing. Uh, we are proposing to update the housing elements, so just taking a real close look again at our forecast model for the types and numbers of housing. Uh, we wanna look at assumptions, um, based on some recent studies that were commissioned by the Washington State Department of Transportation. There was a market analysis in the Greater West Plains area. So what does it have to say about transportation demand and need in our area? Um, analyzing gaps potentially in housing moving forward and making sure that our plan includes a wide variety of choices for everyone. So rental and ownership, a variety of income ranges, um, and, um, what we might need for supported housing. Uh, transportation, uh, we're gonna be looking to integrate in the recently updated industrial suburb area plan that we adopted at the end of last year. Recommendations proposed from the downtown plan. Um, the two corridors planned to help with traffic, to take traffic off US2, which are 6th, 10th and 12th and 21st Avenue on the south side of US2. Looking at turning movements, this is a hot issue in Airway Heights about what happens with US2, what will, um, Washington State Department of Transportation do about, um, the ability to turn in and out of businesses on the street? Um, incorporate some of the visioning that was done for with the 2017 corridor plan. So the idea that we would, um, enhance US2 to have more, uh, safe crossings, that it enhances the experience for pedestrians and bicyclists and it becomes amenity to our commercial areas. And of course, we would need to do some upcasts, um, updating on forecasting around transportation, update our bike plan or pedestrian plan, um, work on our sidewalk infill plan, so we're gonna put sidewalks. Um, and of course, update information around transit. And, uh, again, looking at the West Plains Transportation Study that Washington State Department of Transportation is just completing this year. Uh, for parks, they are working on a, a master plan update. And, uh, we're hoping that there might be some additional space or time with our consultant or, or with, um, parks, certainly in partnership with parks, to look at other things like, um, how do we integrate parks and development? Um, should we be looking at park at parks and private parks? Um, should we have just a generic open space plan? What about special needs and seniors in our community? Um, how can we incorporate, uh, those into our planning efforts for parks? And what will happen to our recreation center, which is still by City Hall? Or excuse me, the recreation center, which is up north in our community center, which is by, um, City Hall, uh, which is currently vacant. And of course, the rec center will be part of the, the master plan update that Parks is doing with, you know, what will it incorporate, what kinds of future uses? Will there be, um, additional school programs, uh, recreational opportunities like, um, field expansion, et cetera, that may occur in that area? Um, capital facilities is that, uh, element I talked about previously, where we wanna be fiscally sound. We need to record as we look at how we're going to serve all of this growth and serve our community, not only, um, with, uh, basic services, but, you know, fire, police, courts, our fleet and our street infrastructure. Um, some minor updates to our water and wastewater plans. We also have a water reclamation area. And then we wanna look at economic development, uh, which is incorporating some of the recent market analysis that are looking long-term. It was happening in the West Plains and along the 6th, 10th, 12th Avenue corridor. And, uh, glean the best possible information about how to approach the future. So that's just in summary, um, what we're, we're looking at for a scope, uh, for the comprehensive plan. It's a huge list, um, I know, and so we're really hoping, fingers crossed, that, um, we'll be able to find a consultant that will be able to help us with these pieces, uh, within the budget that we have. And of course, Zach and I will be spending a lot of time supporting, um, the project, um, doing direct work on the project and helping with a lot of the efforts. Now, one of the pieces I haven't listed here, but will be in the scope, is to go through a complete visioning process with the committee before, uh, this plan gets kicked off. So it'll create that new vision and it will, it will lead into these chapters and help guide the direction that we would be developing this infrastructure, these policies and these strategies. And we would have a, a community engagement, uh, plan that would be incorporated, uh, with this, that would be early and continuous through the process. And we are asking this consultant's response to tell us how they're planning to engage all of our community, including those that are not traditionally involved and those that may be difficult to reach, um, in the community and how they have experience in, in really, uh, getting our community involved in this process. And of course, um, how are they gonna do it in a COVID-19 environment, um, with alternatives that allow for us to move into in-person opportunities should, um, the orders from the governor, uh, be relaxed so that we might be able to have some in-person opportunities? So I'm looking, um, probably for a lot of really innovative engagement strategies, um, probably some self-guided opportunities during the summer where people can take some information and go out into the community and experience what we're asking them and then provide us feedback, um, because we want them to get out there and, and see, uh, what the alternatives might be and give us some really great feedback. So that's a, our proposal, um, for moving forward with a plan in the future. It likely will run from about April to April. So April of this year to April of next year for the development of a plan and, and bringing that forward for adoption. So that's just a, a kind of a summary of what we're proposing to do. Any questions from the Plan Commission?
There's no deadline on that, uh, plan, right? Like, has to be done by a certain timeframe?
No, there is, uh, no deadline because we did meet our, our, uh, update requirement last year. So our next, um, point of providing an update is actually, I believe, 2025, so we've.
So that gives you good time.
Um, so I don't know if, if, uh, if there are any questions, we'll be bringing this topic back, uh, again, but that concludes my presentation. And, um, we can move on to the next item or however the, the chair would like to.
Anybody have any questions?
No, thank you, Heather.
No, I guess you can move to the next item.
Okay. Let's see, um, the, the next item. Can you put the agenda back up for everyone, Zach, please? Master and Commander of Zoom.
Urban, maybe a modification?
A lot of moving screens, a lot of moving parts, I apologize.
Well, I, I think it just helps everybody, um, follow along with our agenda tonight. So next, we'll be talking about the Ewing and Oswald Urban Growth Area, uh, modification. Now, this is an application that is currently before the, uh, Spokane County. Um, that Spokane County processes, uh, includes their Planning Commission as well as the Board of County Commissioners and all. I'm going to, uh, go over to the application we received. Now, this just came in last week, if everybody, uh, can see, uh, the documents. So just as a little bit of a background, um, every jurisdiction, uh, under Growth Management, which is the state law that manages, uh, master planning for growth, is allowed and, and limited to have applications come in one time a year to consider amendments to these comprehensive plans. So Spokane has a comprehensive plan, um, Spokane County has a comprehensive plan, just as we do. And there is an allowance to modify them once a year. And an application was submitted to Spokane County to modify, uh, what's called an urban growth area. Now, an urban growth area is still in the unincorporated county. And it can be identified as a future growth area for a city and would be an area potentially that a city could annex and grow into in a twenty-year horizon. Um, there are a number of laws governing, um, how this occurs in the process, including that there is required to be a countywide document of how all the cities in the county agreed to go through the process of looking at urban growth areas. And those are, in our case, called the countywide planning policies. And they were created, um, by an inter-jurisdictional committee that has representatives of the small cities, the large cities in the county. Um, and then it's, then it's adopted, um, and we abide by these. And so, once a year, an application can be made, but that application has to be consistent with these, um, can we planning policies that all the jurisdictions have agreed to. So, um, in this case, there was an application that came in, um, by the property owners, and I'll just pull this up, uh, for Ewing and Oswald. And, um, I'm gonna navigate this and hopefully there's too much of a delay for everybody because of internet connections to see, uh, the location of the property. So, um, if anybody is getting a delay or a pause in, in what's appearing on the screen, let me know and I'll slow down because I do know that with Zoom meetings, internets are not as speedy for everybody. So what you should be seeing on the left-hand side of your screen, um, is a black and red dotted area that is, uh, the current hundred and eighty acres that is part of the City of Airway Heights Urban Growth Area, an area potentially we can grow into over twenty-year horizon. Um, it's unincorporated at this time. And within that area is located the Spokane County Off-Road Vehicle Park and about twenty acres of buffer between the ORV and residential areas. So you can see, this is immediately north of First Avenue and would be, would be west of Sprague Avenue if it was extended to Northern Quest Casino, here's on the middle of the map. So that's currently inside of our urban growth area. Um, and my internet connection is saying it's unstable, so if I freeze up or garble, let me know. The, uh, area over on the right-hand side of the screen is an area that has been proposed to be incorporated into the urban growth area serving Airway Heights. And this is located north of US2. It would be, uh, essentially starting at the extension of 12th Avenue, uh, going north. It's also another hundred and eighty acres. Both pieces of property are designated as, uh, rural traditional. The property on the right is owned privately, whereas the property on the left, um, that's currently in the urban growth area is owned by Spokane County. So, uh, as part of this process, the Spokane County sends notice to all of the agencies and asks for them to comment on the proposal. Um, so I'm bringing this before you so you can, um, see what the proposal is. And, uh, to answer any questions the Plan Commission might have about the proposal. Um, I believe that Jack Castell, who represents the property owners, is also here tonight. And I believe that, uh, we've got a couple of other agency representatives here, which include Ben Sur. He's from the Washington State Department of Commerce, which is, uh, our manager of growth management issues for our region, Ben is. And we also have Sherling Kay from Washington State Department of Transportation, Greg Fig from Washington State Department of Transportation, Jamie Kowalski from Fairchild Air Force Base, I think are all the ones that I can recognize, um, right now on the call list. So, um, they're, they're proposing, the property owners and the applicant proposing a swap of the two. Spokane County has adopted a resolution last September, uh, saying they're willing to give up the urban growth area designation. And they want to, uh, expedite the application because of housing demand in our region. Um, there has been an opportunity for agencies to comment about the proposal. And, um, we have, um, provided comments. So there, let me, um, give a little bit of a background. Ultimately, um, property that would come into an urban growth area would need a, an urban designation if it becomes part of a city's, uh, urban growth area. That's required by, actually by the Growth Management Act. And, and this, the act even identifies what minimum densities are, and they're higher, uh, than unincorporated areas like currently in the county. So that property today is one unit, one dwelling unit per ten acres. Um, whereas our lowest density would be five units per acre. So there's, there's quite a difference in density. Um, so this is a multi-step application process for urban growth area. It still requires, um, applying to the City of Airway Heights to modify our comprehensive plan because we didn't ever, did not envision this property in our, our plan, which is adopted last year in 2020. And, um, at, there is a need for a demonstration that this development can be served by urban services. So this property actually is within the water service and sewer service area for the city of Spokane, not for Airway Heights. It currently is in, uh, Fire District 10's service area for fire. And, um, it would currently be served by the Spokane County Sheriff's Office. If, if the property, if the property owners apply to the city for an urban growth area, boundary change, um, then we would be looking at it as far as city police services, city, uh, fire services, uh, services from our local access roads that would potentially connect to the property. And, um, you know, other types of, of municipal services that we provide, um, to a piece of property within our jurisdiction. So that, that's an overview of the application. Are there any questions at this point?
Do we know what the intention is going forward, the owners?
It's my understanding that the property owners are interested in doing, uh, low-density, single-family residential development as well as, uh, potentially, uh, location for school sites.
And so, and then the property on the top left there, that's the primary, or the park that would go to the county, is that my understanding?
It is owned by Spokane County as an off-road vehicle park, and it is still in the unincorporated county. Uh, the proposal would be to move the UGA. Uh, this property that is currently in the UGA is my, as I understand, would not be able to be developed. Um, because of the funding that went into the park, it, it needs to remain an off-road vehicle park. So there, there are some other elements I could talk about with regards to, um, our comments on the application. Um, but I just wanted to see if there are any basic questions about the application. And I, I think that, uh, if you also had any specific applications of the applicant, Jack and Stiles here tonight as well.
I don't have any specific questions on that, but, um, how does that, without seeing the maps? That new contour that we started talking about was the Spokane Airport with their secondary runway. Does that go over that area at all, or is that south of that?
No, this is on the north side.
Um, yeah, that's a really good question, so let me, um, stop with this map and then I'll, I'll pull up another, another map uh, that we just actually made. And as you know, we just recently have the ability to do geographic. That we just actually made and as you know, we just recently have the ability to do geographic information system. Development because of Zach. Is able to do that with us. So I apologize that I've got like a million. Documents open right now. So with the assistance of Fairchild Air Force Base, Jamie Kowalski is on the call. Tonight, we were able to get. Some additional information with regards to. Being able to basically project sound contours. So previously, we've been limited to static maps, which the Plan Commission is fully aware of. We've been operating essentially off of two thousand and eight maps for for quite some time. So now with GIS. And with Fairchild sharing GIS data, we've been able to do a quick map to kind of project out things like. Fell's question, which is where is the airport overlay zone potentially? On a piece of property in this area. So the piece of property in question is is this area right here. If you can see the hand on the screen. Is that appearing for everybody? The magic hand. And our current airport overlays, we do have. Accident potential zones associated with the runway. Here is runway number three, which Commissioner Fell was asking for. And this is the airport safety accident potential zone, excuse me, A and B for that potential runway number three. And this is the ones going with the existing runway that's there. So that's our current airport overlay zone, which which I have to note is different than the county's airport overlay zone. And the county does have a different system of safety zones. Than we do and and those do extend through the subject property. This map also shows sound contours. So we at the city of Airway Heights adopted a nineteen ninety-five. Set of sound contours and they translate into a set of of development standards like an overlays on property. Within our existing city limits. So this map is intended as a draft to show. How those would be extended using geographic information system. So. That property would potentially be. In nineteen ninety-five is the base sound contour data that we have and it does. Extend as we far as we can see it onto the property now. Certainly, you know, final analysis could be done as to the actual location. As well as, you know, potentially sound studies may be appropriate as well, but this is. The map that we have to answer Commissioner's fall's question about the relationship. As we look to other overlays that may be in this area.
I guess basically, I don't realize the Fairchild ones extended that far either, but um, so. If we approve this and the town go they decide to build housing in that area, is there any problem with Fairchild?
Well, the, that's a good point. So there's a multi-step process involved in an urban growth area boundary. So. That includes, you know, certainly asking the county for UGA modification. It requires asking the city of Airway Heights by formal application. For comprehensive plan amendment or secondary plan with the studies necessary to analyze. Whether the site can be served. Our code. Through the, this is the upper line here is the sixty-four, excuse me, sixty-five seventy line. And our code indicates that residential has to be demonstrated community. Without alternatives and that a sound study is conducted ascertain. Actually, what the sound. Issues are at that property. I spoke with our legal counsel about this who participated in the development of the overlay zone. Years ago and and that was one of the reasons why that sound study is in there is because these were generalizations. And the site-specific sound analysis could actually determine where. Where the seventy lines and the reason seventy to seventy-five is significant is because our code prohibits. Residential development in seventy to seventy-five.
I have a question also. I apologize for being late. Sorry. The property that is the off-road vehicle area in the north. Why are we trading it back? Didn't we, didn't the city own it and then trade it to Spokane? Now it's coming back.
My understanding is that that property has been county property. And remains county property. I'm I'm not aware that it was city property. While in the urban growth area boundary.
Sean, you might have been on a lot of that. Remember, wasn't that a piece of property that was traded? Where the property, where the rec center is?
I'm not sure. I can't remember how they got that property.
Yeah, I I've been here four years. I I don't think it went.
It's it's before four years.
I heard, I just forgive you a second here.
And the question came up, I remember when they were building the rec center, there were several residents. Explanation was, well, it was a piece of property that was free because it was traded to the county. So there's something to that, I believe.
I don't think it had anything to do with the RV park, though. I think the RV has always been county as far as I know. It says that that property was within our UGA. It was within Airway Heights UGA, but it wasn't, it wasn't Airway Heights property.
Does anyone remember then what was the trade for the property where the rec center is now?
Yeah, there's, there's actually a chat going on, Commissioner Bob, and. One of the people that's on our call chatted indicating that the rec center property was traded traded with Spokane. County as part of the Spokane Raceway property, which is further to the south and to the east. The ORV park has always been part of the county was the comment. And that was my understanding. Having spoken with SCJ Alliance, who this last year in twenty twenty was updating their long-term. Plan for the Spokane County Off-Road Vehicle Park. So they are two separate facilities.
But aren't they co-joined? I mean, they're, really?
No, they're, so the Spokane County Off-Road Vehicle Park is a county park and it they use. As I, I can't remember, forgive me if the acronym might be incorrect, but O R C or O C R funding. And so it it commits the property. To continue to be used in that way. The Raceway property, which is to the south, which is immediate of this site, but immediately north of the. Kalispell Tribal Casino Facility is owned by Spokane County and it's a Raceway facility. And it's not encumbered in that way by funding and and can be sold by Spokane County.
Okay, I'm confused then because I thought they were all joined in the same basic piece. With different uses.
No, the the offered vehicle is in motors, well, it's motorcycle offered vehicle and I I believe they do. What, oh gosh, I'm aging myself. The pedal bikes, I think I can go out there too. And I think some other facilities, whereas the Raceway. Has been subleased by Spokane County and they do. You know, drag racing and I think they might do boxcar racing out there because it is a paved track at that site.
And again, because I live on First Avenue, those pieces of property are all joined. You go into the same gate, you pass the race track and you go into the go-kart track and then the motorcycle racing. It's all one big piece that's together.
It it is owned separately and it has separate restrictions on that. They're not the same parcel, but they are owned by the same entity.
That makes, okay, alright.
Yeah, absolutely. The access you're thinking of is the access along Sprague Avenue and that. Zach, it's like Albert, our city administrator, is asking to speak or at least I saw his hand a second ago. He had his hand up. He might have.
Okay, I was just gonna repeat what you just described, but you're correct. The ORV park has been owned by the county historically. And the swap or the trade that occurred between the city of Airway Heights and Spokane County was for property. On the Spokane Raceway Park.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm just gonna recognize that there's several. Comments here and I'll try to help. So Max Platts from the Washington Department of Transportation Aviation Division has put this on the call. And one of the clarifications that I was trying to illustrate in the map is that. We have at Airway Heights adopted a different set of airport overlays on safety areas. Which are accident potential zones than Spokane County. Spokane County and the city of Spokane went through a joint effort to update their overlay zone. And Airway Heights did not participate in that process. So the other factor is our sound contours that I showed you on the map are based on a nineteen ninety-five set, which is what we adopted. And it's my understanding from Jamie Kowalski at Fairchild Air Force Base. That those are also different than the sound contours that Spokane County adopted. So yes, if you were to look at our map versus. A map that was submitted by, let's say, Spokane International Airport or Hotel Air Force Base. Or or even Spokane County with regards to those two overlays, which is the Joint Lady Study Sound Contours. And Spokane International Airport, they're gonna look different than than they than the county. Because while they're in the county, they're subject to county standards. But what I would add is that, you know, there's a lot of conversation about. Where those sound contours are, but but what I've tried to reflect is what our code. Would apply, should it ever come at some time ever in the future, if it received all the necessary approvals. Annexation into the city. So I'm not representing Spokane County's requirements that are presently on that property.
So once you swap the properties, it will become the city's owners, right?
No, there still needs to be, so there still has to be the process before the Spokane County. Plan Commission and their Board of County Commissioners. And it also involves that steering committee of elected officials I mentioned. That created the county planning policies. They have to have hearings before all three of those bodies on the application. To consider urban growth area boundary change because under growth management, those boundaries are adopted by a county. There would also need to be an application to the city of Airway Heights to amend our comprehensive plan because we haven't planned for that area. As well. I mean, that would go through our process, which would be, you know, workshops and plan commission. Making a recommendation to our city council. And then what's typically the last step is a request for annexation, which. A property has to be inside an urban growth area. There has to be in everybody's comprehensive plan, the county and and city of Airway Heights. Then an application for annexation would occur, which would also be a public process. Before it would ever become incorporated. So just to be clear, this process does not create city land. It does not annex the land. It only creates a boundary which the state law considers annexation to occur. And tell me if this is as clear as that.
It's a pretty long process. I mean, you've got Spokane County going through the whole process and Airway Heights will go through the whole process. And then also you have to go through the annexation process, right?
It is. It can, it can take years. So just as a comparison, not that I'm indicating that we're looking at annexation, but I just to talk about an annexation.
Just for education.
When, when the city of Airway Heights initiated the two thousand and twelve annexation of the East End from Haver Road East. That actually began in two thousand and eight and it wasn't completed until two thousand and twelve. Now, we were also working in tandem with the city of Spokane, who was annexing part of that area too, but it took four years. For that annexation to occur. And it was, it was a complex issue because of things like. You know, service areas and everybody had to update their capital facilities chapter to show they could serve the area. There was a lot of negotiations that occurred because when properties in the unincorporated county, there are other service providers that are impacted. And they lose revenue. And so those things end up taking time to negotiate. So it it can take some time as well as if a proposal has annexation consideration. There may be additional conditions that have to be met. There was a question here. By Sharkey with Wash Dot. Confirm, please confirm the city of Airway Heights contours do not provide for the existing proposed third runway. Our overlay zone of Sharkey was adopted in two thousand and eight, I believe is the date of it. It has some language about extension of the runway for purposes of what is. Protected under accident potential zone. A and B. And for Sharkey's information, the Plan Commission already is aware of this as well as Spokane International Airport. We have already created a draft to adopt similar standards that the city of Spokane and Spokane County have for Spokane International Airport. Already vetted that draft. We have workshopped it with the Plan Commission actually last month. So we are, we are moving in that direction. But we're reflecting what our current regulations are, which is just an A B versus the. The ACZs, which are in the county and the city's version. Well, I hopefully have run through all of the questions that came up in the comments. Yes.
Jack Castell is raising his hand.
Okay, Mr. Chair, would you want to recognize Jack Castell? He represents the property owner.
Yes, if he has a comment, listen, listen to it.
Well, good evening, everybody. There was a question asked, what do the landowners? Intend to do with their property. And they've been longtime owners out in that area. They've been contributing to Airway Heights for years. They would like to, over time, be able to take a blank slate, which is what they have right now. And be able to develop it into something that makes a lot of sense rather than an infill development where you gotta just, you know, pound a bunch of small lots. In a small area and create a neighborhood that is conducive to senior living, is conducive to families. Is conducive to some walking, walkable neighborhoods with some commercial along Twelfth Avenue. They can provide the right-of-way necessary or part of the right-of-way necessary for Twelfth Avenue to extend from. Deer Heights Road to Flint Road. And actually, they used to own, Oswald family owned. Where Walmart is and and that entire corner at one period of time. Craig Condon and I are just just finishing the development of of the acreage that's adjacent to the west. Of this piece of property called Sukani, a neighborhood of two hundred and some homes. The demand has just been incredible in there. About a third of our buyers are airmen from Fairchild Air Force Base. I have a, I have a file with probably seventy-five names in it of people that are standing in line that want to have a home in that area. The proximity to downtown city of Spokane is is excellent. And but, you know, the owners of of this, the Oswalds and Ewing's understand there are some challenges in dealing with this property. But this is kind of a two-step process. The first step is to be able to get the UGA designation. But this is kind of a two-step process. The first step is to be able to get the UGA designation. And then once they have that, then it makes sense for them to spend the money necessary to answer all of the other questions. We have had meetings with the city of Spokane. We've obviously had meetings with Spokane County. We've been in discussions on this for. Over two years and, and there's just a severe shortage of, of land available for single-family housing. I talked to one of our larger apartment owners a few days ago. They own twenty-four hundred and ninety units in Spokane area. They have two vacancies and that's just absolutely unheard of, but that illustrates the problems that we have in providing housing for people. So. I understand your concerns. I've, I've been through the annexation process previously as. When we first developed Sukani, it was under Spokane County jurisdiction and we went through that process as well. So. I'm hopeful that you can back this up and you're, make a wise decision that can. Can help expand the opportunities for housing for, for everybody in Spokane County.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is, will that area be served water-wise by Spokane or Airway Heights?
We're not certain at this point, but city of Spokane has water services available as well as sewer services available. I don't know that the city of Airway Heights could provide the services, but that question hasn't been, been fully vetted at this point. We did talk with the city council at, at one point here, I think last year and, and so. That's another matter of engineering and, you know, what, what can work and what can work best.
Right, because I know the areas of Salish and Salish Court, that's all Spokane water.
It is. Everything, everything actually east of Hayford, the city of.
Right. What about Fire District? What would serve the, because we're limited now, but if we build more houses. We're worried about fire response times.
The Fire Department has weighed in with comments regarding this application and this application doesn't change anything from what it is right now. I mean, right now it's one house for every ten acres. So it's a hundred and eighty acres. That's eighteen homes. We could do that right now without this modification. So as things go forward and this process goes forward. I'm sure they're going to be mitigating measures that are requested, not only for fire, but for, for traffic and for a variety of other issues. Have to be addressed and that's just common sense. So.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
Any other questions?
No, thank you very much for giving us a summary.
I hope that helps.
Yeah, it helps understand what the thought process is. I really appreciate that. We lose you?
Sorry, sorry, Mark. You're getting a lot of feedback. That's why I keep meeting you, but if you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay, will do, Zach.
So I, I think that perhaps Ben Sir with Department of Commerce may want to provide some comments as well. He contacted. Yesterday, Ben's there.
We should allow him because I think it's important that everybody kind of understands what's going on. To help us make a decision going forward.
Right.
I have no problem if Ben wants to speak.
Just one clarification for the commission. There is no decision before the commission. This is not, not a matter for recommendation at this point. It's, it's so far it's an application that's gone out for agency comment on. Technical and service requirements for the proposal.
I mean, I, I think for the purpose of discussion, it's good if we get, you know, different insights into this because I think. Myself, I, I think I would like to know the process, how it takes place. I don't want us to face a problem after three years making a. A recommendation later. So somebody has to say something pertaining to this that helps us understand. I don't have a problem having the person speak. Is Ben there? We, we should allow him about a minute or two.
You're on, you're on muted, Ben. We're not hearing you though. Let me try and.
Let me try this.
There we go.
All right. Good evening, Chair Patel, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Benjamin Sir. I'm the Eastern Regional Manager with the Department of Commerce in the Growth Management Services Unit. I wanted to come and speak with you this evening because we've got some concerns with the application that currently sits before Spokane County. And I, I think I want to start off by saying, we think the underlying ideas behind this are good ones. That being utilizing the land that's currently in the UGA associated with the ORV park. Using that land in a, in a, in a better way than it's currently being used and also supportive of building more housing in the area. Department of Commerce can get behind both of those concepts and. The idea of a swap is one that is available to change or bring new property into the urban growth area. Currently Spokane County has limitations on adding new UGA and so. They're in a situation where they can, they can change what they have, but they can't bring more in. So it's limited. So my first point, I, we have concerns with the process before the county as it's currently been laid out. The county issued an emergency declaration citing the need for more housing. As the rationale for putting this proposal onto the docket for, I think it was actually. Last year's comprehensive plan amendment because they can only make one amendment per year. So what, what they're saying is we want to take the UGA that's associated with the ORV park and move it over here, but we're not changing the zoning. It's our view that. The county needs to have a future land use designation that is urban in nature, not rural in nature, when they bring this land into the urban growth area. And so that will give you, give all the stakeholders an appropriate view of what's intended for that land going forward. Currently, this application appears as if nothing's going to change, but based on the emergency declaration that the county made, we, we don't believe that to be the case and. Mr. Castell, I think has, has backed that up. The, the county is under a settlement agreement whereby when they do a UGA swap, they need to do a capital facilities and transportation analysis. And that analysis would need to be done for the urban future land use that's being proposed, not the rural traditional zoning. As it currently exists. And one of the things that allows this proper stakeholder engagement again. The way it looks is that there's no change and if you send that out to get input as a part of the comprehensive planning process. It's kind of disingenuous because that's really not the intended land use that going forward. So that's, that's one point. Second point, our concerns mainly have to do with the encumbrances that are on the property. I think you've heard from Heather about. The contours associated with Fairchild Air Force Base. And also under current, current county zoning, there's APZ five and. Airport overlay zone and that APZ five currently does not allow for densification within that zone. And so. Even if they were to change the, the future land use and the zoning as it sits now and bring it into the UGA, that APZ would. Would prohibit densification of a half to maybe almost two-thirds of, of the property as I recall. My third point is the ORV park and the UGA associated with it is an opportunity. And I mentioned that the UGA is limited. I think if I were a decision maker. I would want to be, if, if that is something that the city of Airway Heights can utilize, I think you would want to utilize it to its highest and best use. I, my concerns are with the encumbrances because of the, the Air Force Base and the airport. That there may be places where this land could be better utilized if it were to be brought into the urban growth area to support. The future development of Airway Heights. And I think, I think that's all for now. I think I'm willing to leave it there. I guess, you know, I leave you with the question is. Again, I want to reiterate, you know, using that land in the UGA, I think is a good idea. More housing in the Airway Heights area. Is a good idea. I think the question really is, is, is this piece of property the right piece of property and that's something for the commission to weigh. You know, the, the question I would think about is, is this the right place to benefit the future of Airway Heights? And I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for Ben? Thank you, Ben, very much for your time and comments. Appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Back to Heather.
Well, that, that, yes, thank you. That concludes our presentation as an update on the application for urban growth area. We'll. Keep the Plan Commission apprised of additional dates that were made aware of, because again, this is a Spokane County application and there will be future hearings. Before the Plan Commission, the Steering Committee of Elected Officials and the Board of County Commissioners. So. We can conclude this workshop and move to the next workshop if the commission so desires.
Thank you. You doing the draft downtown or? The next one is which one? Draft downtown plans and propose commercial zoning at?
Hopefully, ever been, we'll see this in just a moment. And I think this is probably why we've got some members of the public here today. And hopefully this will. Here we go. So let me know when you see the PowerPoint in your screen.
Oh, I see it.
I do.
Perfect. Okay. So this is actually an image from nineteen fifty-two of Airway Heights. This is courtesy of our consultant, S.J. Lyons. Who was retained under a grant, fifty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Commerce to do a subbury plan for downtown. Subbury plans are specific studies, including potential land use and policy recommendations that we adopt as part of our comprehensive plan. And the grant was extended to committees in Washington State looking to address our housing, our regional housing shortage. And so there is. An emphasis on looking at housing opportunities as part of the downtown plan. So this is a copy of the cover of the downtown plan. This is available on the city's website. It is. Under a city of Airway Heights, under Planning Siberia Plans, the full documents there if you or would like to take a look at this. This is actually just today, our very first workshop on the draft plan and the proposed changes to the commercial zone before the Plan Commission. And I'll go into some detail about some of the public engagement activities we've been doing since last year on the plan and the proposed zoning. So part of the purpose of a downtown plan is have a shared vision for downtown. It's a practical guide of how we're going to move forward. With the downtown implementation helps us target things like funding in those areas. Again, part of the grant that we received from the state was to look at housing opportunities. It also allowed us to align our downtown with other plans that preceded this and almost immediately preceded this. So. The US Highway Two Corridor Plan that was done in twenty seventeen and the art plan that was recently adopted. It's just to share an understanding of the goals and where we're going basically with the plan. So. Just a little bit of history. I'm not sure everybody knows this, but Airway Heights was incorporated in nineteen fifty-five. This is actually an older image. Over the, the Fairchild Air Force Base, as I understand, and it was called the Galena Air Depot at one point. So this, again, as I mentioned, was based on previous work that had been done to try and address consistency and. Basically a, a single uniform stream of policy and implementation strategies for this area. So a little bit of the overview, what, what happened as part of this green application. Our consultant, S.J., did a lot of data gathering to look at the previous plans that were adopted, looked at our existing zoning code. They did a lot of public outreach. We did a postcard actually last summer that outlined all of our public engagement activities for the whole summer. So a single postcard would allow people. To get connected through engagement activities that were predominantly through Zoom or through internet because we were, of course. Subject to the governor's orders under COVID nineteen not to have in-person meetings. So that had telephonic stakeholder interviews. There was presentations, for example, at the West Plains Chamber of Commerce. There was a survey, actually two surveys that were available through our social media, through our Facebook and through the city's website for people to take visual preference survey. There was a two-day workshop in which people could drop in through Zoom and they could participate with the consultants on looking at concepts and ideas. About the, the plan. And then, of course, we had joint workshops with our Plan Commission and our City Council so they could. See what came out of the engagement results at the end of the summer. In another joint study session, which was public as well to show a preliminary draft of the downtown plan as well as the. Draft regulations. So I'm going to dive a little bit into what the downtown plan actually says. So it does do a fair amount of research into what's going on in the downtown, everything from population. To housing and one of the things that Ben Sir from the Department of Commerce mentioned and, and why. The city is very interested in, in looking at a downtown area and the opportunities for housing as our population is growing. Actually, our official population is even higher. Than this number. We were at ten thousand five hundred. We have had a sixty-four percent increase in the past decade. In the last three years, we've been at twenty-nine percent of population increase and we are projected to increase even more over the next few years. Looking at our housing, we do have a significant number of housing units in our community. The majority of the housing actually near Way Heights is rare occupied and ideally we want to have a balance. So it options for everybody. I call it housing choice. You get to choose. What kind of housing you want in the community where you want to live. But we are also in extraordinary time where vacancy rates are extremely low. This is the combined city and county vacancy rate. Which has historically been significantly higher for the amount of units that are available on the market. The plan also talks about housing affordability. Generally speaking, Airway Heights is more affordable than the county. Our median home value is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand compared to the county, which is about two hundred and sixty-one thousand. And our rent is a little bit lower than the county at nine hundred and thirty-nine versus nine hundred and forty-three. One of the things that's significant about the housing need in our community is that fifty percent of those that rented, twenty-four percent of those people who own homes. Pay more than thirty percent of the income toward housing. Now HUD. Housing and Urban Development, a federal agency, has set some guidelines as to how much of an individual household income should go only to housing costs. And it's, it's a, it's a, it's a line that's a safety line that indicates when households are paying more than thirty percent. Of their income to pay for housing costs. It is a risk for them. They're actually sacrificing other areas like transportation. And healthcare in order to, to supplement and make up that housing cost. So it's something that helps us understand how much housing should be. On a rental ownership basis. Our comprehensive plan just recently was updated last year. Identifying our number of new housing units we need by twenty thirty-seven. That's a, a set planning horizon which we work within. That plan identified that probably about a third of our new housing will be needed for what's called low and very low income. That's actually a federal standard of how much income by the number of people in the household they make annually. So we know what the ownership. Oh, are, are you guys there?
Yeah.
Okay. What that is required to be for house costs. What that is required to be for house costs and rental costs. But interestingly enough, from the analysis of our area here in Airway Heights, seventy-five percent of all of our housing is either only single family on a detached lot or it's multifamily. And so this image is showing a, a type of housing that we are missing. And it's missing in a lot of communities called the missing middle. So duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, courtyard apartments. These are this accessory dwelling units. These are all types of housing that we don't currently have in our community. Let's see. And then one of the most significant things that I think is new information is how many people who are in Airway Heights are not working in Airway Heights? And how many people who are working in Airway Heights don't live in Airway Heights? So really only about two hundred fifty-nine people, according to On The Map, which is understood as a census database. Actually, both live and work here. So the majority of people are living somewhere else, driving here to work and, or they're living here and leaving to work. So these kinds of data and figures helps us identify kind of where we need to go with a downtown plan and look at housing specifically. So the summary of the plan indicates that we need to increase affordable housing and the availability. We also want to make downtown a place where people spend their off-time hours. We want to provide more local employment opportunities because there's a relationship there between transportation impacts. For example, of people being on the road and not being able to work in the community they live. More housing options like missing middle. We want to create a downtown to attract people to this place. We've heard a lot of comments during the public engagement that people pass through and they never get to see the real Airway Heights because they know, never go off of the US Two. And so they want it to be a place that attracts people via cultural center. And we certainly want to support local business and employers and build off the strengths that we have in our local community. So during the public engagement process, a vision was created for the downtown. And that vision that came out of it was Airway Heights and visions of downtown with a sense of place that is walkable, family-friendly, thriving and active. And through all of these public engagement activities from the surveys and the in-person interviews, there were some key factors that were identified that we need to consider in a downtown. We needed to have a unique identity. It needed to be livable. It needed to be safe. A lot of comments about crossing US Two and the need to get across from residential to, for example, the Yokes Grocery Store. We need to maintain traffic flow because we do have destinations that need to be able to get through Airway Heights, such as Fairchild Air Force Base, and it needs to be efficient. We need to see our downtown businesses prosper. We want to have new businesses locate there. We need to make connections, as I mentioned, between the north and the south side of the US Two. We need to take advantage of the space we have for infill developments, so commercial business that can go in our downtown area. Placemaking is very important as part of, of creating a sense of community in a, in a small town feel that we heard from a lot of our community thus far in the comprehensive plan and the public engagement process. We need to certainly identify opportunities for multimodal. So we've heard, for example, in the industrial plan, which was adopted last fall, you know, it's great that we have a lot of industrial development, but you know, how do you get from there into town? Because people who work there want to go to lunch. I mean, they want to experience Airway Heights. And so how do we make those connections to the remainder of the community? And, and how do we make a transformative plan moving forward? There were actually three alternatives that were proposed as part of this public process. And again, we had a lot of feedback on the visual preferences, alternatives. And this is the plan that moved forward based on those comments. And that included essentially maintaining what people feel has always been the traditional downtown along US Highway Two. So King Street being a north-south access. And so this would be an area where we actually already have a downtown designation under Arizona called, called the Village Square, and I'll, I'll talk about that in, in a few moments. It looks at potentially extending a little bit of the downtown north so that we have a north-south axis. The plan proposes for the housing to encourage more housing, denser housing to the north of the downtown. So we can look at some of those housing types that are, are not currently included in our plan. We have some locational information like our current city hall and public buildings. The plan also identifies the strong need to make connections and pedestrian improvements across US Two as well as the opportunity potentially for some kind of civic facility that would be on the south side of US Two. And so these images just kind of bring forth what it would look like for, you know, a strong connection, north-south, enhanced pedestrian improvements, a more visually attractive downtown with the addition of landscaping, which is building off of the US Highway Two plan from twenty seventeen and looking at opportunities for housing. So I'm going to pause here before I move into the zoning piece and see if there are any questions about the downtown plan development and where we are in the draft.
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
Rachel Granrath from SGI Alliance, who is our primary consultant in the plan, is here tonight too. So if you have any questions, or Rachel, if you want to add something as well to the downtown plan development.
No, I think you did a great job, Heather. Nice to be with you all this evening. This has been a, a really fun process and it's an exciting plan for Airway Heights. I think it's been really community-driven and I know that the Planning Commission and City Council and folks have heard a lot about this already. So thank you for hearing from us again.
So this is a workshop format, Mr. Chair. So I don't know if there is anyone from the public that's here that has any questions, if you want to.
Open it up.
Or recognize anybody?
I don't know if they can hear me or?
It looks like a Justin Davis has questions. I can unmute him if you want to.
Yeah, go ahead. Hey, Justin?
Hey, how you guys doing today?
All right.
So our concern comes in, we didn't see the picture of it on the slideshows here. But we know you're going to put in the, we want to put in the trees and there's a walking path and everything that's going to go in front of a lot of the restaurants out there and the businesses, which I think a lot of that could look really good for our area. We definitely like the idea of being a part of the downtown area, especially on the edge of it. I think that's going to be great for all of us. The concern we had is the pictures that we were looking at the other day that was up on the website. It showed trees going literally right in front of where our grass area would be, down Lawson, right behind us where edge of our parking is coming into that gravel lot that we have, right along the side of us where the Yokes Parking Lot is. And like, we are enclosed on four sides with trees. So for a restaurant, visibility is a big thing. So that was one concern of ours. I don't mind some trees. Trees are good, but four sides of trees might be a little bit too much for us. The other issue and concern that we had is right now our parking lot, the way that it's set up, even some of our concrete foundations that we have, it's set up on an angled parking lot where Fourteenth has to be our access point for people to come in, to flow with that direction in the correct way. With us, we'd be losing that Fourteenth Avenue and it shows us that Lawson would become our main access point coming into our restaurant. Right now, because of COVID, we have built a pergola right there in front of where that access point is. And not just that, but that access point is also was the old drive-through area for the Taco Time that was there before us. Now, I designed the building with the idea that I wasn't going to use a, a drive-through on there. With that being said, now with COVID, drive-through seemed like a really good idea. Keep that available for something down the road where now if that becomes my main access point, I lose the ability to use that drive-through at all. When we originally had got the location, we bought the building back in twenty sixteen. We knew that this plan was in the works. We had talked to the city about it. And the way we were told about it was that you guys were ready to kind of swap lands with us. You were going to give us the land in front of our building up to the street where the sidewalks were going to go in. And you were going to take the gravel road behind us. We have about fifty feet of gravel that we own behind us. And that was going to become a new road, access road that was going to go over to Yokes or whatever businesses were going to be over there. But based on that picture, it looks like that those trees go, and I realize it might not be to scale, which is fine, we'll discuss that in more detail later on with someone that's a part of the planning on that. But it looks like that those trees in front of our building on the north side, like I said, go right to our grass and we lose everything right to the edge of our parking on the edge behind us. And even lastly, there was a discussion that there was kind of a, an easement road between us and Yokes. And there was talk that even that road was going to get split between, half of that was going to go to Yokes, half of that was going to go to us. So we can possibly expand our parking that direction there too. So I'm curious as to who we can talk to or what the final plans are going to be on. How many trees we're going to have, where that access road is going to come in? Because that, like I said, coming in through Lawson means I lose my drive-through area all the way or completely, which again, if we have another COVID a year down the road or something like that, that might be something that I have to utilize in order to keep my business afloat. And if that becomes my main access, I can't utilize that for my building. And it also changes the current parking structure that I have set up for my parking where all the access has come in from the north side of the building.
I, I, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, the most straightforward answer is those are, those are artistic drawings. They're not designed to scale. They are not.
We were hoping so.
They're, they're. Yeah, they're only a concept. And what, what the idea is within the US Two Corridor Plan and picked up in the proposed downtown plan is that somehow that there would be a design that integrates the public right of way you mentioned, which is Fourteenth Avenue that runs parallel to US Two and what we, we call Thirteenth Avenue, which runs on the north side into a combined access parking area with US Two, but provides parking. It cre- it creates pedestrian and bicycle access and would have landscaping probably in a, in a parkway concept. So it's not designed, it's only some artistic renderings to show what it could look like. One of the implementation strategies of the plan, which I can bring up on the screen here, is to actually move forward pretty quickly with getting some grant funding so that we could actually go through a design process and we would do it as a public process and engage the property owners. And of course DOT, because it's the Department of Transportation facility right through there, what it would actually look like and the type of concerns that you identify about access and, and your future needs for your business would all be part of the dialogue and consideration with the design.
Now, I know you guys have done a lot of outreach. You were saying over the last year, lots of cards that were sent out, different workshops that were being held. As you guys could imagine, in the last year, things have been very hectic for all the business owners. So if I lose track of that, if I'm not able to hear one of those workshops that are going on, who is it that I can talk to directly that's going to have that kind of final say or have that insight of what's going to happen? Where I can talk to him and say, okay, this is my concern, you know, we can work on this, maybe we can agree on that. Who can I go to for that?
Well, so directly, the person who had managed a project like that would be Kevin Anderson, our Public Works Director, who would, who would manage a, you know, contract with the, and we would, again, we'd be looking for grant money to pay for the design. And then ultimately, the, the practice has been to bring those designs to City Council to have them vetted before, before they're, they're built. But we certainly hope that you'll be engaged in the process. One of the things that we've actually been doing in twenty twenty to try and expand how to reach people because we, we can't, we can't do in-person meetings is the city started issuing a quarterly newsletter. So that goes to every utility account holder in the city that has provided an email address. So that goes out. And we also are emailing that newsletter to every business license holder who has, you know, a license, which was required to have a business in Airway Heights. So that would be one way to do that. We're also doing special communication through that email list. We are, in addition, as we can afford it, to do postcards, in part because there, there, people like to have, you know, physical information about when meetings are. There are people who don't have access to internet and the technology. So we trying to do a variety of ways just moving forward. We'll continue to do that so that we can engage as many people as possible. But if you were to miss or lose track, ultimately, you could always contact Kevin Anderson. You can contact me, I'm the principal planner, Heather Troutman, and also the City Council would be presented likely as a design before we would go forward with, with a final design, which is exactly what's happening on the Sixth, Tenth, Twelfth Avenue. If you've been that West Plains Connect that went out last summer too. There's a whole website that shows design alternatives for Sixth Avenue, Tenth Avenue and Twelfth Avenue. And, and the summary of all that's been available through the same types of mechanisms. And it's been vetted through the council looking at the design, which will also be a Bull of Art design.
And since you said you were looking for grant money to be able to get moving on this, is that the only way that you're looking at funding this project? Or is there a talk about changes in taxes or anything like that?
So just to give, so that's a, that we would be looking for grant money predominantly to move forward with the development. And, and the reason is, is because these projects are multiple millions of dollars. And the, and the money that's brought in through a variety of funding mechanisms at Airway Heights are too limited to even do road construction and even road repairs. So Airway Heights is, as most jurisdictions, city of Spokane is the same way, Spokane County. They're looking for grant money to help build roadway because it's, the cost is just too prohibitive in order to do it. And I was just to say that the Sixth, Tenth, Twelfth that we're going to build in year after next between Hayford Road up to Garfield Road was a, a transportation benefit grant that, and it was only enough to pay for the first portion of the roadway. We'll have to apply multiple years in order to build it, build it out, hope that we're successful because they're all competitive.
Is there any grants that businesses that we can get in on to help you guys out with that? And just saying that as a business owner, be able to beautify this area, draw people to this area would definitely help recover, help us recover from what's going on with COVID and how that's affected our businesses?
I would say that there are pieces definitely that would benefit from, from community support, business owner support, or even direct application. So one of the things that has been outlined in this plan is beginning to do placemaking, like put art out in our community. There's no reason we should be, need to wait for a segment of the roadway to be rebuilt to start enhancing that and, and beginning to have a community feel. So I would say there's probably, that would be one of the ones that comes to the top of my mind is, is grant money around art that you may be able to apply for from private foundations. And then the other one potentially would be what's called traffic calming. So funding that would be available to be invested to improve crossings in an area, but that's something we can look into a little bit more about for private applications. But probably arts is the one that I think is most readily available.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any way, like I said, if we can reach out, art is not going to be my specialty. You don't want to see what I pick for, in front of our building necessarily. But if there's someone that we can do, if we can write, you know, a grant to help do that, I've done that already for our business to help to get different loans for the business. So if there's a grant that I can help do that talks about the impact of it for our businesses, if that's something that could help the city, not me personally, but help get something to the city, we'd be more than happy to try to work with that.
That's, that's great. That's absolutely wonderful. And that's exactly the kind of support we, we hoping to get from, from own property owner, business owners like yourself about the plan. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate your time, input.
Are there any other members of the public before we move on to the zoning part of, of tonight?
I guess not.
We, I, I will keep moving on here. All right. Let's see. I really miss you guys. I wish, I wish we had in-person meetings. Hopefully, it's, it's got to load up into a, the presentation again, so hopefully it'll get there for you. Okay, so everybody can see the image?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So honesty, I just pulled this actually off of the website. I think this is a design that actually is, is about to be built in Airway Heights. But it was a great image of what we're trying to do with modifications to the commercial zone. So I, I thought it was great, but it was on a commercial real estate listing for Airway Heights. So you may actually see this fairly soon. On a commercial real estate listing um, for airway heights. So you may actually see this um, fairly soon.
Yeah, it's sort of constructed.
Well, thank you. I, I'll have to drive by and take a look at it. Um, so along with the downtown plan. Uh, part of the grant is covering updating our existing commercial zones. Um, because as we were looking at how to do placemaking and how to encourage. Uh, a downtown that looks and feels uh, as the way our community um, sees as a destination place. It made sense that we should be looking at the zones that implements the construction in those areas. So. The goal of, of the update to our existing commercial zones was, you know, create a transformative and easy to understand. Um, set of standards uh, for development, be consistent with all the plans that um, I highlighted earlier this evening, so conference of plan, the US two uh, plan. Um, as well as uh, there was actually a Washington State Department of Transportation analysis that started in twenty nineteen. I think it's going to be completed in. In twenty twenty-one that included a market analysis about what the opportunities for growth in the West Plains were. Considering housing, because that was uh, the purpose of the grant and get economic development investment in our downtown. So this is an image of our draft twenty twenty zoning map. So I just wanted to show this to you because we're really talking about. The pink and the red on the map. Um, so from city limits. Uh, we're looking at how our downtown plan and commercial zoning would help facilitate um, divisions uh, we spoke about a little bit earlier. Um, so an overview out of the downtown plan and with our zoning code is having to do predominantly with two zones. One of them is called the C one restricted commercial area and the other is called the C two general commercial. So just going back, the C one map, uh, which is the areas in light pink on this map. Uh, so here's one uh, right here, south of US two, which also has an overlay zone on it called the Village Overlay. Um, it's called the uh, commercial restricted and the remainder is called general commercial, the dark red. So ultimately, the recommendation coming from the council is to keep these two zones. And that we would actually um, create another zone, which would be called a C one A. And so it would allow for downtown area, clear downtown area, a transition area, east and west. And then going into our general commercial area. Uh, they recommended that we take. What is now broken up into separate chapters in a development code into a single chapter. Uh, which makes it easier to find information on what you can do and what the development standards are in a single location versus. Um, an old style format that our code has, which is, well, if you want to know what you want to do, you have to look at another zone because we allow the same things in this zone as that zone. It also would introduce for the first time design standards. And so the idea is that. These design standards help a building interact with the space around it with a public street. And, and it becomes something that's an, uh, more of an asset. Businesses are an asset, but the building itself is an asset. Um, and it creates a relationship between the road and the building. And so um, the question earlier about, you know, what would a landscape look like? Well, it would allow for them to, to melt. And when you meld landscape, um, the streetscape and the building. It can do a lot of things like make it a place that people are willing um, to go into. It becomes more friendly um, from a business perspective. It also makes it someplace where. Uh, you might have the more ability to do multimodal, people are more comfortable walking um, along storefronts or corridor. Um, when it's attractive and interesting. Um, it uh, certainly um, as regulations go, um, it includes um, other elements. That um, we need to consider. Um, so one of them is residential, the underlying uh, purpose of. This grant application was to look at residential and so um, it contemplates allowing mixed use, which is. Um, a residential use over an office or commercial space where appropriate, consistent with our um, Fairchild Air Force Base. Uh, compatibility requirements um, in these areas. So come, so it's identifying what our code already says as you can on a case by case basis. Apply for mixed use, um, but it would make it context sensitive to the location, but still subject to our requirements and compatibility requirements. And of course condense um, into an easy to use format. So that's one of the uh, biggest challenges. That Zach uh, and I experienced and have experienced since coming to the city is because of how. Separated all the codes and the development standards are. Uh, people simply on their own are not able to even. Um, find what they're able to do or that there might be a multitude of overlay zones, the impact ultimately what they can do. And, and Rachel, you might want to correct me wrong, but is there something like, like we have eight or nine overlay zones? So it. It makes it very complex for a property owner or a potential business to determine what they would be able to do in our city. Um, the general commercial, it's, it's retaining the large format, which you typically see, you know, the Walmart and. And uh, other uh, large retail businesses would continue to be allowed. It emphasizes again. Looking at multimodal throughout the corridor, um, safety uh, and crossings. Again, that mixed use area does go through um, our commercial corridor and on a case by case. Basis considering residential in that area consistent with our regulations. We have been talking about moving from a, a hearing based process. To a permit process. Um, that's up for conversation with the workshop and with plan commission. Uh, we've been speaking with Fairchild Air Force Representatives about this as well and, and how that may relate to base compatibility. But again, um, adding design standards, so changing the form of buildings in the, in the commercial area. So be. We heard a lot through the public process on the downtown plan and on the con-plan. That people wanted to have buildings that felt like they were part of a downtown or part of a, a small town and not. Necessarily a, a building that um, reflects national branding. Um, buildings, which is what we are experiencing in, in portions of the city and certainly um, many of those buildings. Uh, may comply with the proposed design standards, but others would, would need to um, potentially. Be consistent. So it also proposes moving the mixed use code we already have into the commercial zone. So it's easier to see. So I just want to pop back and show you the mixed use zone that we have um, is the hatched or pink dotted area. Um, these are areas where uh, on a site specific basis with, with demonstrated community need, there is an opportunity to apply today. For conditionally is permit to do mixed use. Um, so this draft is contemplating allowing it, but with design standards uh, to go with that. Let's see, uh, let's see, um, the plan, the recommendations from the consultant also recommended condensing. And eliminating a lot of the overlay zones we have because they're not actually achieving the goals they state and they really have no regulatory effect. Um, and moving overall to a kind of a centers and quarters concept similar to the city of Spokane uh, with our design standards. Let's see, uh, this is a blurry unfortunate uh, view of what. The zoning potentially would look like, we would still have um, mixed use through the sand contour area of sixty five to seventy. Uh, but this is representing really what would be the C one. The medium red would be the C one A that, that proposed new transitional commercial zone. And then the remainder of the properties through the corridor would remain the C two general commercial zone uh, that they already have. So that summarizes the uh, commercial uh, zone changes. I, I can pull up the draft if uh, anybody wants to see it and it does include. You know, some tables condensing, so you can see from one zone to the other, you know, building height and setbacks or. Um, building bulk requirements and uh, it does include things like the design standards I mentioned. So we having a clear. Appearance of the top, of the base and the top to buildings. Um, having clear entrances. So that image I showed at the beginning of the presentation where it had. Oons extending over, you know, identifying where the entrance is, it makes it friendlier and easily identifiable. Uh, to a customer coming into the building. Overall, um, the development standards like. Setbacks of height are not being proposed. It's really the design standards of how a building appears and how it interacts with. Uh, the street or, or most of the recommendations from this. And of course, um, I just have to mention that. Within this area, we do have uh, still our, our overlay zone for the joint landy study with Fairchild Air Force Base. So some uses. That are currently in the draft, probably, um, we have to update that draft indicate they'd still require conditionally is permit, whereas others would be um, outweighed permitted. So um, with that, uh, Rachel, do you have anything you want to add with regards to the draft?
Rachel.
All right, I'm, I'm having a muting thing. Um, no, I think you did a great summary, Heather. Um, uh, there are, there is a lot there when we do. Zoning code updates and it's kind of a long document. Um, so Heather did a great overview of the summary. Um, if, if anyone wants to, I advise you to dive into that document and, and understand uh, what that looks like. Um, but, but I think we're happy to answer any specific questions you have here tonight as well.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Yeah.
Anybody from the public raised a pen or? If not, thank you Heather very much for the presentation. And I think we need to move this to the public hearing now. The zoning draft or?
Um, that would be, the next step would be to move this to public hearing on um, both the plan and the draft regulations. Um, we are going to be circulating this draft to agencies. As I mentioned, we'd already met with Fairchild Air Force Base. And uh, we'll be sending that out so we get any additional comments. So um, we'll be looking for potentially some. Updates, as I mentioned, in the use table about conditionally versus permitted uses. Um, but uh, the relatively similar to what you're seeing today is what we would have.
I guess if uh, none of the commissioners have any questions or comments, I'd like to propose to move this. Downtown plan draft and propose commercial zoning to public hearing. All in favor?
Yeah.
I.
Hi.
I think you needed a second there, Cal.
Oh, sorry.
You're excited. I'm, I'm glad you're excited about the plan.
I am. I, 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 you know what? I've been on this committee for four years now. And I'm seeing so much good momentum happening and makes me proud.
I agree.
Who was the second, uh, the hearing? Mark, oh, same, okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Well, uh, with that, that was the last uh, workshop for this evening. Thank you very much for your, your time, commissioners and members. Members of the C's and the public that are here.
Thank you for your nice uh, presentation and I'm going to move to the commissioners' reports.
Cal, Sean has, uh, um, excuse me, uh, Justin Davis has his hand up if you want me to recognize him.
Is that in reference to what we just finished?
Uh, I'm not sure. Um, do you want me to unmute him?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
All right, this was uh, in reference to the last topic we were just talking about, um, about uh, putting the. Uh, restrictions on the commercial designs and everything. I think that's actually a really good idea. I think it would really do a lot for the street appeal. Um, I was just curious, is anybody looking at the concerns, especially because we have Spokane uh, county. Plus and a lot of businesses uh, we're seeing are going in still on the Spokane side. So the tax dollars are going there rather than the airway. Um, are we concerned with the restrictions being too tight and losing the possible business going to airway and then staying over on the Spokane side? Uh, you're muted.
Uh, yeah, so uh, interestingly enough, uh. Spokane does have design standards uh, similar to these and in some cases. Uh, more extensive. So the entirety of the downtown that extends from. The hospital area, south of the hospital area, all the way out toward uh, Gonzaga and then, you know. North to the North River Bank area, you know, the arena, all that. Those already have design standards as do the um. The corridors and retail and commercial centers, which there are, I think there's over twenty, twenty-two of them. Um, so it would be more of an apples to apples um, comparison for a developer, in my opinion. To go to a center corridor versus come to airway heights because of the development requirement. So there are some places in airway heights. Um, excuse me, in um, Spokane, um, that don't have any design, any design standards and that would be. For example, along Division Street, that's a general commercial corridor. So. In part, it has to do with where they want to be and what market they're looking at, but um, if they were looking. You know, a similar. Area, um, so um, Garland's, um, Shadle. Um, trying to think, I mean, uh, the area by uh, uh, up on the South Hill. Um, Twenty-Ninth Avenue, those are all designated centers that have standards. So I guess if they were going to be in a. Commercial area like that, it would be pretty similar.
Right, yeah, I wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be something that wouldn't draw business because we definitely. Want as much fresh business coming into that area as we could. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Um, and please do take a look at the um, policy plan because part of. The proposal implementation strategies is it dials in about how the city can help encourage business. Through um, you know, potentially pursuing grants or, or low interest loans or no interest loans to help businesses redo their facade. Um, yeah, so I mean, there's some, some cool ideas in there about how airway heights can help business for those that might want to. Um, change a, a business facade to attract new business that, that um, would be a benefit to.
And where was that one more time? Sorry, I was taking notes.
It's in the implementation strategy section of the plan. I can, I can pull it up real quick.
We can search for it, yeah.
Yeah, let me um, apologize, I gotta shut a few things down here before, before it will let me share. Got too many documents open.
If Zach just didn't say anything about my hand being up, this could have all been over. You'll learn.
Let's see if we'll do it. There we go. Sorry, I just had too many documents open. Uh, so this is on. Page twenty-eight of the plan and it's the action policy matrix. So these are investment strategies. That the consultant is recommending to the city to help realize the vision that's identified in the plan. Uh, let's see, um. There's the streetscape one, hop, there's the housing. Uh, let's see, so uh, business development, education. Um, invest in infrastructure needs, leverage investments with grants, partnerships to collaborate. Downtown development that you, that can be utilized for storefront improvement, grants to local business. So this is strategy three point four. On page thirty and the eligible funding sources are um. SERB, which is a state grant historic preservation, um, trust, the, the Main Street program and um. SBDA, which I can't remember what that is right this minute. Rachel, do you remember what that is?
Uh, yeah, that's the Small Business Development Authority and you have a local chapter in Spokane.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry, sorry, I'm getting gummy mentally.
That's okay.
That's it, thank you. We'll move forward to commissioners' uh, report. Uh. I like to start by saying that Commissioner Fail has uh, put his resignation. Uh, from the committee and I really would like to thank him personally for. Being part of the committee and all the hard work he's brought. Uh, he's been a, an instrument. In a lot of process here, so I really want to thank you. It's always sad to see somebody leave, but I think he's moving into Spokane. So that will uh, cause him a problem. So he has decided to resign and I think he'll be here for one month. But I really like to thank you for your services, extra effort you made, you know, even though you had busy work schedule. But uh, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, it wasn't, wasn't planned. Life changes, things happen. So.
I'll be. Be always welcome. If your plans change and you want to come back, we're here. We're not going anywhere.
Yeah, I don't know if it's temporary or permanent, but I'll be out of airway heights for a while, so. Yeah, I don't know if it's temporary or permanent, but I'll be out of Airway Heights for a while. So I had to figure that out, let it step down.
Well, Sean, your work has always been very good. I sure appreciate having you been on the board. You've taught me a lot. And you'll be missed for sure.
Yeah, I'll say the same, Sean. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
But I think that Sean, we just very much appreciate everything that you've done. To, you know, help with so many. Areas of progress for Airway Heights, working on the arts plan, working on the US Highway Two corridor plan. The industrial plan, the comprehensive plan, all of the development applications that have been presented to the plan commission. You've really been thoughtful, good, good questions, you're well prepared. You've chaired the meetings on occasion to help lead the, the dialogue and the conversation to come to a, an outcome. That's in the best interests of Airway Heights and each of those initiatives. And we're just gonna miss you a huge amount. I don't know what we would do without you. And really just your knowledge and, and consistency and steadfastness as part of the plan commission.
Thank you. I know you got good, good hands with the people that are still here. And I know we have some candidates that are being reviewed already for the opening, so.
Echo that, Sean. I also still owe you coffee, so we'll figure that out.
Now, you love to go to Spokane now.
I can drive. It's fine.
Forgot about the coffees.
Anybody else? Any reports, commissioners?
No, none.
Not will turn on staff report?
Oh my goodness, I think we've updated you on everything that we're working on. And I'm going to apologize again. I'm so sorry, but your March meeting is going to be packed. Um, we pursuant to the, the. Actions of the plan commission, we've moved quite a few items forward to public hearing next month. So the March tenth meeting, there's going to be the. Work, the items that we brought forth for the GMA consistency. So the adult family homes, the airport overlay zone, the essential public facilities, citing criteria. The manufactured home provisions, the conference of plan annual amendment process. As well as if we're prepared, we may be bringing the downtown plan and the commercial zone. We did have to do legal notice and the chief of press for that because of the way that chief of press provides their notice. We have to send them the notice well in advance of the hearings. Uh, but it's going to be a packed eating evening and I'm, I'm sorry. Um, the second item is, don't forget next Tuesday, because Monday is a holiday and city halls closed. But next Tuesday, the city council will be deliberating on the candidates for plan commission. Uh, to appoint, to recommend and have the mayor appoint an individual to do that. That will only bring us back up to four.
Four again.
With, uh, with Sean's resignation. So it's my understanding that Albert Tripp, our city administrator, is going to announce to the city council candidates. Who are also being voted on for the two vacant city council positions on Tuesday. If there might be interest on any of those candidates in volunteering for the plan commission.
Heather. Was there any further discussion about wanting planning commission members to speak at that meeting? About their ideas regarding the applicants? I, I know it was discussed, but I don't know if they finalized it.
I don't think we have a, a issue now because of the vacancy open, right? Which candidate to propose?
Uh, oh, that, that reminds me, I apologize. I missed your chair, but Hank Bineker was one of the candidates for plan commission. Who also met the residency requirements, withdrew his, his application last week. So that leaves, that leaves three candidates for the plan commission vacancy. But only one of them meets the residency requirement in municipal code. And that was, that is Angelina Campo Bosso.
Right, but there was a conversation at the city council. Suggesting or asking if they wanted planning commission members to offer their opinions about the applicants. And I don't know if that was finalized.
I don't think there was any final conclusion or request to the city council. What I advised the council was if the plan commission wants to be present and speak about the candidates. We would need to do a special meeting notice because of the issue of convening as a quorum.
That's right, right, right.
Yeah, so.
Well, if, correct me if I'm wrong, of the three, there's only one that meets. The current requirements, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And the, at the study session this week, the, there was some small discussion by the council of. Would they need to abide by the municipal code for appointment based on the vacancy criteria? And, and they did not request or indicate that they wanted any preparation of an alternative. To selecting somebody who met the code requirement.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Um, well, that, I think concludes our, at least my part for tonight. I'm going to drink a lot of water after this.
Yeah.
Zach?
Oh, I mean, I was going to talk about, yeah, the, the planning commission in Monday on Tuesday, excuse me, but Heather's got it. Um, other than that, uh, we're starting to pick up at the city with current planning stuff. The past two weeks have been busier than the past two months. So just, we're getting going. We're really excited. It doesn't look like developments. So we're busy, but it's a good.
It's a good sign.
Yes, agree.
Be prepared for a long meeting next month, guys. Bring coffee or whatever you need to bring to the meeting. It'll probably be, but we spent two hours on a light agenda today. So. You know, I, I thought it was going to be a, a one hour meeting today, but sorry. Anyway, if anybody doesn't have any more comments, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-eight.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Good luck, guys.
So much, everybody. Have a great evening.
Bye bye.